All right, thanks, Oscar. Hello and welcome to the September 1st. It's a new month. School board meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and we will start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do we have any revisions or changes to the agenda?
We do not.
All right. Read the summary of non-public actions from August 18th.
Hello. I don't know what that is. I think the cord just pressed the button, so I apologize.
That's all right. Summary of non-public actions from August 18th, 2021. Mrs. Harrison made a motion to approve the non-public minutes of August 4th, 2021. Mrs. McDonald seconded. Motion carried 500. Mrs. Harrison made a motion to accept the nomination of Corey Sulzin as LMS math teacher for a salary of $48,807 for the 2021-22 school year. Mrs. Hirschberger seconded. The motion carried 500. Mr. Burke made a motion to accept the nomination of Lisa Moore as CHS science teacher for a salary of $59,741 for the 2021-22 school year. Mrs. Harrison seconded. The motion carried 500. Mrs. Harrison made a motion to accept the nomination of Valerie Nelson as CHS guidance counselor at a salary of $85,000 for the 2021-22 school year. Mrs. Hirschberger seconded. The motion carried 500. Mrs. Harrison made a motion to accept the nomination of Dennis Barnaby as CHS special education teacher at a salary of $45,388 for the 21-22 school year. Mrs. Hirschberger seconded. The motion carried 400. Mrs. Harrison made a motion to release Elizabeth Lennon from her contract and accept her resignation as CHS science teacher. Mr. Burke seconded. The motion carried 500. Mrs. Harrison made a motion to release Emily Post from her contract and accept her resignation as CHS science teacher subject to finding a suitable replacement. Mr. Burke seconded. The motion carried 500. Mr. Burke made a motion to release Lynn Nagy from her contract as CHS fax teacher and accept her resignation. Mrs. McDonald seconded. The motion carried 500. Mrs. Harrison made a motion to release Nate Cooper from his contract and accept his resignation as CHS social studies teacher. Mr. Burke seconded. The motion carried 500. Mrs. Harrison made a motion to seal the staff issues section of the August 18th, 21, non-public minutes until June 30th, 2022. Mr. Burke seconded. The motion carried 500. Presentations and recognitions. We don't have any this evening. That brings us to community input. You can provide community input by joining our Google Meet at meet.google.com/har-jana-hnk or you can join the Meet by phone at 1-662-565-5146. The PIN to join is 911-992-355-POUND. Do we have any community input from the audience tonight? No? Okay.
Let me just check the link. There is nobody waiting.
All right. Great. Thank you. We can keep that open for a few minutes if you don't mind and then we can move on to correspondence.
All right. So a correspondence, I'm going to be even more brief than I was last week. Considering the amount of emails we're receiving. And if someone has an interest of reading the entire email, they'll be posted within the minutes so that you can read the information there. So this past week, we had 27 correspondents. So the first we received was from Chris Albert. Basically saying there should be no mask mandate. Second, Marissa Brunel reinforced email that was not received. Wants mask, especially at GMS, and had several questions. Jessica St. Pierre is not in favor of mask. Just St. Pierre again wants to know, we got our information on how masks are effective. She's looking for more information on the bus mandate and why they have to wear them on the bus. The next one is from Michelle Gill, wants parent's choice. Amanda Bemis. After a 7:14 meeting, her and her husband have made a determination they will not ever put their kids in our district. No mask, it should be parent choice. Erica Donahue. She wants to know about best now being instructional and just in a little bit more clarification on the UAs and how the change went about. And I believe Martha's already sent information in regards to that. Next is Tara Coakley. Wants a mandate all under 12 and teachers to mask up and listen to the experts. Tyler Matthews is questioning our mask mandate against state guidelines. Kristen Rogies, I believe that's the name. Will teachers be required to wear a mask when kids have to? Megan Reed wants parent choice on mask. Megan Reed again went on about vaccine versus non-vaccine or a mask and should be optional for all. Jen White. Question why we didn't get her email that she sent to the wrong address. Might be it. People not in support of mask emails, she feels went missing. Again, I backtracked through all the emails and
They were not, they were sent to a junk email folder.
And then they were reforwarded.
Yes.
Like sent one of them.
They weren't sent to the wrong address.
Michelle Zayas, thank you for following science and having students through sixth grade wear a mask. Erica Ruggles supports and approves our reopening plan. And we received one from Tina Harrison in response to Tyler Matthews that we have done everything correctly that the Hampshire Department of Education requires us to do. Debbie Breton wants masked parent choice. Tyler Matthews again disagrees with the statement targeting masking was determined by age, grade level due to the access to the vaccine and not by vaccine status. Vows to take the next action to move forward so policy is consistent. Katie Somers looking for updated protocols for school opening, which hopefully she has by now. Kristen Skudowa inquiring if we will send out mask policy, which has already been sent out. Tyler Matthews, still against masks, says we're hiding behind the CDC. Jim Norton would like clarification on volunteers, which I know Michelle sent out, inquiring as far as CHS boosters, friends of performing arts concessions, whether or not they have to wear masks or be proof of vaccination. Mike Breton questioning the science, if any, behind mask. Mask working, asking for scientific studies, questions, store bought mask. Marissa Brunel asking for clarification on when masks are required. And she states that the FAQ section was confusing, concerned our precautions last year had been thrown out the window. Dan Romano sent us a video on some doctor about vaccines. That one was interesting. Saying it will cause many problems, that it's experimental. Mike Breton still looking for scientific proof about masks. I know that Dr. Jettie responded to him today. And Debbie Rice today reached out to us and to Dan, that I know Dan's already gotten back to her on concerns of overcrowding on especially bus four and in times of arrivals and departures of the buses. And that was it.
Thank you.
Like I said, for anyone who wants to read them, they'll be there.
Superintendent comments?
So I'm going to end the call.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Yes.
Any other public input? And now here up.
All right, so a couple of things. Opening day for staff, so last Wednesday we held our opening day. I think we got off to a great start. We were, Ms. Harrison, who was at work in her own opening day that day, did provide us a video greeting for staff. We had everybody in the Campbell auditorium. I had sent an email out in advance letting people know what the masking rules were, but asking people to consider wearing masks. And it looked to be about a quarter of the staff who, about 50-ish people who came masked that day. And really kind of the highlight of the day, the day was focused around the portrait of a learner work and the goals that the board has set, making sure that our staff understand what the board's goals are for the next three years and then how the schools had aligned local school-based goals to the board's goals. So the work that you've seen last time, we unveiled all that, a kind of a 30,000-foot view. And then in staff meetings, each school went deeper into it. But I thought it was important that they understand that the goals that are set for Griffin are linked to the board goals and are similar to the goals at the middle school and the high school, for example. So that staff see that we're all trying to pull in the same direction and set our goals for the year. We then invited, and this was sort of the home run of the day, but we invited four students to come in and to share with staff how they have learned and grown under the concepts that are in the in the portrait of a learner. So Abigail Sun did a great job representing Griffin and the students there. Jackson Lucas had represented the middle school and presented on the staff there. And each of them called out specific teachers and said, Mrs. so-and-so or Mr. so-and-so, when you did the following, here's how it helped me learn to persevere and adapt or to be a better communicator, a better critical thinker. At the high school, Elena Montanaro and Johnny Lewis, who are both seniors, they did a great job. And both of them go all the way back to Griffin. So, you know, they were able to sort of do the span of how that helped them. And I thought the staff reacted really well to hearing from students, like how meaningful that was to them and what that meant going forward. So in the afternoon, we went into an exercise where we really looked at developmentally extracting what we mean by these things and how we want to make sure that we're making it come alive in the classroom. And so that was a, it was a really good vertical conversation. And then they got into more horizontal teams to engage deeper into that. So I thought it was a really good first day. That afternoon, the middle school staff was told they finally had access to the building because we had wrapped the construction projects up really on time. And so they were able to get in and start what they needed to do to be ready for the first day with students on Monday. So I think we got off to a good start and just pause there. If anybody else has anything they want to add or questions that you have about that opening day, I'd be happy to answer those.
No, I'm glad it went well. I had a chance to do the bus tour for the new teachers the day before. So I got to eat, to meet a lot of the new hires who, it was, I had a lot of fun doing it. Give them a grand tour of Litchfield and just point out that, you know, the key factors in our, in our community and we had a good time. That was great.
Yeah, so remember that, you know, that was last week, but it was Monday, Tuesday with new teachers and then Wednesday, Thursday, Friday with the rest of the staff. So Wednesday was the all, the opening day ceremonies as a district. And then we had building based days on Thursday and Friday, with Friday really being get your classroom set up. It's like get, get what you need to so that we can hit the ground running on Monday. So then for opening day for students, they came in on Monday. And honestly, I was at the middle school at 7:00 AM, sort of monitoring the way things went. We had, we've had some road bumps. This has not been the smoothest of openings. I'll, I'll say that out loud. I do appreciate the parents who have worked with us and are sticking with us as we get ourselves up to speed. But I think we're there. You know, by today, we're sort of hitting a groove. I think we'll have all the, all the pieces kind of ironed out by tomorrow. And then, you know, by Tuesday, when we come back from the long weekend, so remember we have Friday and Monday off for Labor Day weekend. By Tuesday, we'll be in the groove and really kind of sailing ahead, so. But it's great to see students back in the building and it's great to be, you know, as normal as possible. So the high school schedule is back to the schedule that they're accustomed to, not the four by four last year. The middle school, of course, big learning curve with between combined busing and extra time and the periods and so forth. You know, they're getting up to speed with that. Griffin has, you know, they've sort of reverted back to the way they've done things pre-pandemic also. So it's just nice to see that pulse and energy back in the building, so. But I can pause there and see if there are other opening day concerns that you've heard or things that you want to make sure we've addressed. I do, I do intend to send a parent survey out possibly tomorrow. I might wait until early next week, but just to collect, okay, are there lingering things that we need to get on? Let us know that now so that we can get after those.
We should have the results.
I was touched on bus three yesterday and that that was some, a driver that didn't show up. And that's why people were filling in and that's why the buses, bus was late.
Yeah, so.
But I think it was resolved today because I think my kids made it to.
Well, bus three ran fine the first day and then they had a driver shortage on the second day. And by the time that was picked up, parents had already grabbed their kids at the end of the road and had driven them in. But the bus depot supervisor was out there driving the bus to try to pick up whoever was lingering. So it was a big whoops. And we're meeting with transportation tomorrow, so we'll iron out any last wrinkles on transportation. But I think we have everything kind of settled back in. But you're right, bus three was a, you know, I got a text from Martha that bus three didn't show up. I'm like, how does that happen? But it happens when the driver doesn't show, so.
Yeah.
Bus three didn't show up and then bus three.
Rough day for bus three.
Bus three had a bad day.
You know, just on, on transportation while we're there, Michelle just reminded, we, we're ready to push out the FirstView app.
It's already out.
Oh, thank you.
I did it last night. I logged it last night.
So the app is now available. So any parents, you know, follow the directions that came.
Yeah, they're all on the web. There's a self-guided, there's a self-guided pictorial. There's an instruction, the school codes are out there in the registration page, the registration instructions. So if you just read it and read it carefully.
Explain what it is again, FirstView.
Where is it?
Yep.
On the district website under bus routes.
I'm going to see if I can actually, we'll just try to make this as easy as possible, so.
It's a way for you to, it's a way for parents.
Oh, I know what it is.
Well, I know, people out there may not. I think if you didn't do it last year. It's a way for people to tell when the bus is coming and where it is.
So if you look, here's, here's the school leadership website and we're going to go to district and then.
Actually, if you scroll down to the middle of the page.
Okay.
Right? See, oh, a little further up, see, you see bus routes.
Bus routes, right. So we click on bus routes here in the middle. If you're able to display the screen, there it is, perfect. So we'll click on bus routes here in the middle and there's all the information. You've got the routes and so forth. But down at the bottom, right?
Right there.
On the side, on the right view.
Oh, FirstView Bus Tracker is here. So the app is called FirstView. It is the bus tracking app. And you can see there's a parent letter available. There's registration guide, that's where you get all the codes and everything that you need to do. And then there's frequently asked questions that go with it. We've also provided a link to both Google Play and to the Apple App Store. If you click that, it'll take you right to the correct app. So you can be sure that you get the right one.
Can we send that information out with parent, the principal newsletters this week? Thank you. Make sure that CHS and LMS send it out.
I can post that.
Can like random people go, I want to know where bus three goes and sign up?
Have that code.
But they could go on this site and get a code, couldn't they?
Get a code, it's not going to really do.
Okay.
And it doesn't, yeah, if you check it out, it really just tells about, you'd have to put like a bunch of locations in around town.
Oh, all right, yeah, okay.
We have to put a student name in too. So it's, it knows, it's going to know who you are.
Okay, good.
You have to register literally.
Oh, perfect, that's what it, yeah.
So it's going to know who you are and we can check that.
Perfect.
What's nice about that is, you know, for example, the bus three scenario, if you were logged in, you would have seen bus three was nowhere around.
Rattling in Nashville.
That's, that's helpful info in terms of I probably need to take my students to school to get a ride. Versus you would see, oh, bus three is running 10 minutes late and then you know to wait the 10 minutes.
Don't go up to the bus stop.
And probably by the time you're checking, it's already five minutes late. So now you know it's only five minutes away or whatever.
And this works for the ride home too. So if a parent's coming from work and wants to be able to track when their kiddo is going to get off the bus and they're trying to beat the bus, they'll have a better idea.
And with the dashboard that, the administrative dashboard that we're on, I can instantly go circle, you know, get that, get that bus if somebody called. But I've already gotten feedback on it from parents and, and the parents that sent me emails said they absolutely love this. So at least it's working.
Great. That's a great tool.
All right. So first day enrollment numbers, I am not on, are they live in there? Yeah, so, so you're, you're presented with two pieces of information here. So information number one at the top is the actual counts that are in our system, right?
The registrations or the head count?
No, actual head count, I'm sorry. So the information at the top is counting, how many boys, how many girls are there in each grade and adding that up. So it's actually counting those as on opening day. And you can see that the counts are not outrageously different than what we were sort of predicting. But we also know historically that some families will come back after Labor Day or you know, they're in the process of moving and in the process of registering. And so there's a little bit of a road bump there. You also know that we could have students in our system who have withdrawn, but maybe the families haven't told us that or they intended to withdraw, so they're not, they're not physically in class, but we haven't removed them from the system yet. The bottom part of the chart are the actual students who are in the system so that you can compare and contrast sort of the worst case scenario against the current scenario. And then remember that the October 1st numbers, which means that we've reconciled.
You're not doing one this Friday for a first Friday count?
It'll be a first Friday count.
So there'll be one this Friday?
It's not this Friday, it's the next Friday. But that's actually even more accurate because by then people have settled down.
Right, right, right.
It's not Labor Day weekend.
And it's, and it allows us to bear in on that October 1st count, which is the state official count for the enrollment that we have. And then once we have the October 1st count, Michelle and I will do the magic with the enrollment projections and so forth. So we'll have that early on in our budgeting window. And we can compare back to what we predicted a year ago compared to what we actually had on October 1st. Anything on first day enrollments?
It was about an 8% differential between the actual head count and what's in Power School. Is that typical from what we know? Is that a, it is?
No, I think it's fairly typical, but I also think we're still in a COVID scenario. So, you know, some people are kind of adjusting to what their comfort level is. And, and that goes both ways. You know, we, we've heard from parents who say, because you have this masking expectation, I don't want to send my children. We have other families who are saying, I don't think the masking situation is robust enough and I'm worried about sending my children. So we, we're hearing it on both sides. All right. Next is the ESER funds. So we were required to submit to the state a plan on how we intended to use the ARPSER funds. I provided a link to, to the board that shows the plan that we uploaded. Relatively, there's not a lot of detail in it, but we definitely have checked all the boxes and met the requirements that we needed to. The other piece is that I just want the board to know that the ESER 3 funds, we are required to set aside 20% of those toward closing academic gaps. So I have been very clear about using this for long-term gains with like the ventilation systems in our schools and funding network. However, we do have to set aside 20% of the ESER 3. And in our case, the ESER 3 funds were $254,000. So we're, we're planning to set aside obviously about $50,000 as required by that.
As we go through, you know, initial screenings for this year, could that number increase if necessary?
Yeah, if we, if we identify significant gaps, we've talked as a team. So there were districts last year that were out of school for a good chunk of the year. And the gaps that they're facing are obviously much higher. We were largely in person with the Blinded Synchronists working fairly well. And so we, we're not thinking that we're going to identify as many gaps, but we still do have that obligation to set aside the 20%. And if that can be used to fund, you know, extended school days or extended school years, summer school, et cetera. You know, those funds are available through, oh gosh, I've lost track of it. But I think ESER 3 goes through 25 even, 2025, 24?
Then two goes through 23 and three goes through 24.
So those funds are not, you know, they don't have to be used by this June. We have plenty of time to design and figure out how to, how to work on that. Anything else on ESER? And then the last thing I wanted to comment on is public access to agendas. So at the last meeting, Mr. York had sent in, and I was confused actually on what he was trying to do. So I had a great conversation with him and then met with Michelle. And so what I'm projecting here is kind of a change in the way that we make our meetings accessible to the public and it's in response to the conversation with Mr. York. So going forward, the board agenda, the way you're accustomed to see it with hyperlinks in it, we're going to have that assembled and available to you on Friday like we've been doing. And then on Monday, we're going to take that agenda and make a copy of it for the public side. And we will then remove anything that is proprietary, non-public, you know, et cetera, confidential, et cetera. But this is the public document and it's live now and it's on our website. And you can see that we have an anonymous entity who is in observing this agenda, right? So the public has the same thing that you have versus what we've been doing is a PDF that can be, you know, 50 pages, 100 pages, depending on what's there. And so now we're going to actually provide links in the same way. So instead of it being a long PDF that they're trying to, okay, so the agenda's here and I've got this PDF and I'm sort of scrolling and side by side trying to figure pieces out, they'll have it. You'll notice if you look at this that, you know, the links are here for the things because these were all publicly available documents. There's no reason not to have them. And the first day enrollment numbers, which were updated for you today, Michelle highlighted new. This is, this is not what was there on Monday. This has actually been refreshed so that you can see that there is something new that has been added in.
That's very helpful.
I like that.
In red, right?
But when did you say they get, the public will get access?
So our commitment, so the law says 24 hours in advance.
We try to have it Monday by noon.
That's our goal.
Give or take.
Yep.
Well, it's, it's the same document. I don't see any reason why they can't have it on Monday.
Well, we like the board to review. Yeah, because we want the board to review over the weekend before.
Right, right.
And occasionally, you know, on Friday, we're still livening some links up. So we want to get this as clean and as accurate as we can, but having it available on Monday.
So I have a question though, as far as like first day enrollment new.
Yep.
That wasn't available today. Earlier.
I got it late in the day.
All right, because it said new when I was clicking, it was doing nothing.
I got it late, I got it late in the day.
But I didn't log on earlier.
Earlier I did and same thing with the minutes for August 18th, they weren't there.
Right.
We had.
The minute, well, the minutes, I posted the minutes, August 18th minutes late, late Monday night. Because that's when they got finished.
But the link in the agenda wasn't livened up?
No.
Oh, it wasn't?
No.
Not, not this afternoon.
Right. And so.
August 4th was, August 18th wasn't. It just said August 18th.
Yeah.
So I thought at four again.
Yep. So if there's something that comes late, I think, you know, if the board hasn't had a chance to review it, I think we should table it to the. So just, just say that, just let me know and then we can table it.
So this, this sec, I left this window open because I know there was a concern expressed about the timeliness of the minutes. The law states that the draft minutes have to be available within five business days. So here's the website and this is under school board minutes, right? So nice, easy to find. And you, you can see that the minutes are posted here. They will be available on the Tuesday after a board meeting because that's the five business days. So again, we've reviewed that procedure and then, you know, we can be building the agenda and making the links to that because they're, they're already posted here within that five days. So, so really we ought to get into a good flow here now that we have it. It did involve internally, we just need to make sure that anything that is confidential is in a folder that somebody, you know, can't access from the public. And that's why I'm using an incognito window because I'm not even signed in. You can see here, I'm just, I mean, it's the anonymous incognito person.
Are you the manatee?
No. I don't think I am.
It was this afternoon.
I might be, I might, I might be the manatee actually now that you say that. But we're doing that to test it because if I click a link and it says you don't have access to this, then we know that it's shut the way it should be. So it was a way for us to test that we are putting things into the right folders to make sure that the right access privileges are given. I think in the end, this will be more meaningful for the public. I do intend to follow up with Mr. York to make sure that this worked for him tonight. If he has other feedback, I can. If he has other feedback, I can, we can make adjustments, but.
I think that's a big improvement, having it as a, as Google links instead of a PDF is really helpful.
And now it's just again, that permission thing, make sure that we don't, because you don't even want to make one slip up. So it's for Michelle to make the right folder access. And so you can see that Kathy Snyder has joined us, so hello Kathy. On the agenda, so.
Play along at home.
So I hope this was responsive to the public, and I hope the board appreciates this adjustment. And we'll keep working on those timelines, make sure that we're hitting them.
Um, school board comments?
I have a comment about lockers with LMS, but I don't know if I should say it now or wait till the COVID discussion. I think it's a concern that a lot of parents have. I've been seeing a lot of chatter about it. I understand Martha's miss there has been very, very responsive to these concerns, so I appreciate that, and I know she's doing her best. But as a parent of a fifth grader, who I took her backpack upstairs, literally from when she took it off and put it on the scale, it weighed 21 pounds.
It's light.
I know it's nothing. Well, she's 60 pounds, just so we're clear. And the only things in her bag are the required supply list, and she runs cross-country, so it had her sneakers, and then it had her lunch and her water bottle, so.
Just that, was it was in her backpack and it weighed 21 pounds?
So I think this is something we need to think about. I don't know how to do it. I'm not going to pretend to be an expert in any way, shape, or form on how to accomplish this. But there has to be a way that the kids can at least visit lockers once or twice during the day to switch out what they need to switch out. If it's a COVID concern, maybe they are shuffled, they're done alphabetically, so that they're not by class, so that they're a little bit more broken up, and they can go during vest, and they can go at the end of the, I don't know how to do it, but I...
You just said there's nothing in her bag.
Huh? So she has the binder that has all the folders for each, she has to carry seven folders with her. She has a five-subject notebook that's required for English. There is a science book. Today she came home with an actual Atlas book for social studies. So again, I'm just, this is what, I wanted to have actual information, so I took it upstairs and I waited. So something to think about. I just think they're too little to be, you know, walking around, and there are kids with even heavier stuff with soccer gear, I imagine, you know, and it's...
We do not use lockers at my school, but our students aren't expected to carry the books. The books stay in the classroom. No kid should be carrying around a social studies book this thick, that age. It's gonna, they're all gonna have scoliosis for God's sake.
And that might be worth, you know, that might be a suggestion for the fifth grade teachers too, you know. My eighth grader doesn't have anything in his except for his Chromebook.
Oh, and the Chromebook, right, I forgot to even mention the Chromebook.
So we had a conversation as an admin team about what is the future of lockers, because the high school, you know, so it's a huge exercise to issue every lockers and make sure they're security and that the combos have been rotated and blah, blah, blah. It takes effort, and hardly anybody uses them, especially now that the Chromebooks seem to be the way to go. So I'll reengage with the admin team around that. There were obvious COVID concerns, but there was also a sense that lockers have become sort of passe. I didn't think about athletics, though, that's a...
Yeah.
You're not the first parent who mentioned the athletic equipment as a concern, so.
I just called the high school today, and they actually said that they put it in the locker room. Bring their athletic bags and just drop them in the locker room. So that's what we did today.
In high school and at middle school, they dropped them in the locker room, in the gym.
So she has two bags.
Yeah, so she'd have to have two bags.
They have one in the front, one in the back.
Yeah.
I saw that kid walking by.
And then they have cleats hanging off of baseball bats.
Yeah.
But that's...
Soccer, baseball.
And so to the extent that even the five-subject notebook, if they can have a slot in the classroom that they're kept in the classroom, that they can go grab, then they're not carrying around a five-subject notebook for the whole day. It's just, it's not necessary.
We will.
I know you guys are working on it, and again, I know Martha's been really responsive to it, so I know, but it's something.
They don't move that much either, right?
They're kind of in their cluster, they come down for music and health, those are the two UAs that they have, and then lunch.
But if you put a science and social studies book, there's 20 pounds right there. Yeah. That's crazy.
Just a thought.
Yeah. I'm worried about our children's backs.
Any other school board comments?
I just have one, because for some time now, we get to recognitions, there's no recognitions. We stopped, we stopped doing that, whether it was during COVID or not, but I know in the past, we would nominate someone that was outstanding in the community or a teacher. I think we need to get back to that. I mean, there's been a lot of good, and a lot of good people, and a lot of good things happening. We haven't been recognizing anyone.
That's a good point.
We'll get back to it.
Great. Anything else?
I just have one, why, I have one thing. I think Liz was the one that told me about what happened in Londonderry with their school board members resigning. And I just want to thank our community for respectfully coming to us with your issues.
Respectfully, yes.
Not threatening, I mean, that, none of us joined for that. We are, you know, I didn't even realize there was a stipend when I joined. I thought it was a volunteer position.
10 cents a minute, just so you know.
You know, so I know, we're never going to agree on everything, but I just hope that you are feeling as a community, the culture that this board has, that we're here to listen. And so we just appreciate the fact that people have come to us in a very respectful manner, and, you know, I think that's important, so thank you.
Well said, thank you. All right, I think that's it. Our school board comments. So on to public minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the August 4th, 2021 meeting.
Second.
Any discussion?
I had one thing, but it might have been on the other, oh, it's the next minute.
Okay, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 5-0-0.
I think we should shelf the 18th until our next meeting. That's me, because I didn't get a chance.
I haven't looked at it.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
You want me to say my one thing? I feel like on page six, when we made that, when we chunked out the grid and had that first, we discussed that one top block, low level of community impact, but substantial level of community transmission. I feel like that needs to be mentioned in that sentence, so it says, Mrs. Ames made a motion to revise the COVAX 3.0 version of the plan to reflect that masks are required for children in grades K through six and targeted for grades 9 through 12. I think it should say during low levels of community impact and substantial levels of community transitions, because it was that one block that we were looking at and voted on initially, that's all.
And that it would be targeted for K to six. I mean, it's required, but the word we changed that box to was targeted, right?
That was a really confusing discussion.
It was, yes, yes, yeah.
I think we confused a lot of people in town.
Yeah, yeah. Wasn't it initially targeted? I thought it was targeted, and there was discussion to change it to...
Which one, I'm sorry?
The top right, right, block was red.
Was red.
Yeah.
Red.
Also was changed to targeted.
Yeah, we changed it to yellow.
Okay, got it, yeah.
You want it to be green.
I wanted it to be green, that's right, yeah.
Well, didn't we change?
We changed strongly encouraged to targeted.
Correct, and we, but we changed, the whole, the whole last column was red.
Right.
And we went to yellow, yellow.
Yeah. But that was the second vote, though? The first vote was just that upper right corner.
Then we changed the one below it.
Yeah.
Right? And then the other thing that I, I sent Michelle my, the statements that I made during, in response to the correspondence. So she has those, so those will be included in the minutes, rather than a description of what I said.
Okay.
But we can revisit those and approve them during our next meeting. All right, GMS principals report, Mr. Mitchell.
Do you want, I'll just project.
Yeah, if you want to.
Enjoying the play along at home.
Yeah. Anonymous Fox. I have to say, when you do incognito, you get a lot of spinning pinwheels, but it's very slow.
Actually, we can start with the current enrollments, because I had, we ran the numbers this afternoon. And so as far as we understand them, pre-K, although it hasn't started, starts on Tuesday, is up to 35. Kindergarten stays at 83, grade one starts, stays at 77, grade two is down to 79, grade three is at 86, grade four is at 97, for a total population of 456. So that's...
That was today.
That was today, when Joyce ran the numbers with...
And that's different than this.
Well, and it's maybe a little different, only because, as we said, Joyce can factor in all of the, I have these files, I'm waiting for full registration, I'm waiting for these files, the kids aren't here, and I know I'm just waiting for that request of records from wherever in the state, she kind of factors them in, and she gives me, we'll call them the Joyce numbers.
Fair enough.
I tend to believe they are the most accurate and reflective of the current situation.
Those are enrollment numbers, but that's not your headcount so far.
We haven't, we haven't done like an actual counting of the heads. That's where, at Joyce's desk, with the registration process all going through, that's actually how we understand the numbers, to be in the office.
What was your total number again?
456.
Thank you.
And Dan, just for the public, that is a typo. Those were not May 3rd numbers, those are...
Oh, yeah, I also changed it to 9, 9, 1. That was, yeah, I'm sorry, that was, that was not a typo. That was from going off the template, and I forgot to change the date.
You said 456, that says 454.
No, no, with the new...
Oh, it's even newer?
Yeah. So I had this last week, and what I wanted to do, give you the most up-to-date, this was submitted on Friday, so now that we actually had some bodies in the building, what does it actually look like, and what do we understand?
Sorry, which one changed? Which one's changed to make it 456?
Pre-K is 35. Pre-K is 35, grade two is 79, grade four is 97. Guess the 456. Okay. The first thing I mentioned was the opening day's update, but such and such kind of covered that. But I did want to point out, because I know it came to the board earlier in the summer, now it's actually complete, which is the Jersey Barrier painting project, which was completely community-run at the end of the school year. One parent, her name was Sarah Rotast, reached out and said, is this something you'd be open to? And I said, I'd be open to it with a little bit of control. I want to kind of see the design, and here's what we have to do. And I had to check with Cory and Dave to make sure we own it, and we got the blessing from business and from facilities, and so we got the go-ahead. And she then put it out to the community and got enormous feedback, so everything was supplied, literally the only thing that the school supplied was we gave the Zern key to turn on the water, so that they could power us, they power washed, they primed. Another community member, Jocelyn Rahoe, is actually a muralist. So between she and Kristen Stret, they kind of guided the project. So if you haven't gone by, definitely go look. They look great. They don't look like graffiti, they look like colorful murals, and it definitely adds a lot to the, it was one of those where you didn't always necessarily notice the Jersey barriers, but when you did, then you really did. And now when you notice, now you really notice them, and they look fun, and they add some life. And what you don't even see, they did all of them, so even the ones that you don't see that are in the, like the in-between the two portals. They did those, and they consulted with some other people. So one of them, and I'm not sure if this is completed, I haven't checked, they were going to put like the chalkboard paint because that Jersey barrier had actually been used by OT and PT for handwriting. It's just a large surface where they can try, so so they kind of factored in everything and reached out and tried to accommodate everything, and I just think it, they look amazing. I didn't know how they were going to look. I knew they did look better than just gray concrete, but they look fantastic, so thank you, Sarah, for kind of coming up with that idea. Just honestly, I always struggle because I, GMS tends to have the first board presentation. It's easy to fall on the second or third day of school, so here we are, so I don't have any kind of program to kind of give you. But what I did want to update you with on, because we spoke at the last board meeting, we spoke publicly, and so is the goals, the building goals that we have, so I just wanted to kind of give you an update on what's been done. And so three days into school, we actually already have done some work. So the first one was that goal on, I'm calling them kind of skills affecting success. And what we did was at the first staff meeting, which we had on Friday, so GMS did the district day on Wednesday. We did the teacher prep day on Thursday, and then we kind of all gather on Friday. And one of the activities we did was, they were divided into groups based on buddy sitcoms. So we had the Friends group and the Nash group, and so, and we gave them about 10 minutes to just write down any kind of quote-unquote life skill that you hope our students have by the time they leave for LMS. And we put them all together, and so right now, we have a document that lists 164 different skills. And they range from, and I'm not kidding, being able to open your own milk and zip your coat, to, you know, critically think within a group. And so it has this range, and so now, the next, and this is not like the next thing we'll do, but now we take that list and we'll break it down and divide it up kind of by grade level. So what I want is grade-level teams to then look at this list and say, this is something we expect them to have before they come to us. This is something we hope they have after they leave us. And kind of the hope is to have this general, I guess you could call it scope and sequence of these skills to kind of see where we dress. And not that we're adding it to the curriculum. So we're not going to directly teach all these things, although we know in kindergarten, part of it is, you know, we do teach them to zip the coat. However, it will be a good document to also share with parents, so that we can also say a little bit clearly that, you know, by the time they leave first grade, we expect them to be able to open their own lunch bag, unpack and pack their own bag, you know, zip their own jacket and things like that, so that while we're not saying we're going to teach them, these are just the expectations. Because I, the reference I use is a story from a few years ago, where I was sitting with a group of teachers at my former school, and they were saying, these, these kids, they don't even know how to sharpen a pencil, and they talk about it, they don't even know how to sharpen a pencil, these kids, I don't even know how to sharpen a pencil. And after talking about it for five minutes, someone in the group, not me, someone in the group just said, do we know that they taught them how to sharpen pencils in the first grade? I don't know. And they went to the first grade, and they said, actually, last year we had pre-sharpened pencils. So it was just that whole, you know, so sometimes we expect them to have things, but we don't necessarily know that they have been taught or addressed. So the hope is that we now have this document and this skillset kind of scope and sequence that we can go through. So that was kind of really good and valuable work, because they had 10 minutes, and then when we compiled it all, we have 164 skills that we now need to go through. Will they all stay on the form? Probably not. There's probably some repetitive ones, there's probably ones that need to be described, and there's probably some that we'll get rid of. But 164 is a good starting point for those skills. We also addressed the SEL goal, and so this is being spearheaded by our student success team, who worked over the summer, coming up with kind of, not necessarily activities, but kind of classroom approaches. And they broke it down so that they can be, and here's a one-minute activity, five-minute, 10-minute activity. And so they're going to stay ahead of that, so they can provide it with the teachers. We've asked teachers, classroom teachers this year, to have a community meeting daily. So we're not calling it morning meeting, just because our schedule doesn't always, some come in and go write the specials, so they kind of have a community meeting from that. And in addition to that, we are bringing, not bringing back, but we are reigniting the PAWS program. So we bought, I think, 5,000 little PAWS stickers, and so we're going to use those to recognize good behavior, as well as then also adding in monthly recognitions for students. And there's been a commitment led by Jen Hayes and the Student Success Team. Tomorrow, we will have a all-school Google Meet that's going to reintroduce the PAWS program to the students. And we have a fun video that starring my daughters and a couple of other faculty kids who happened to be there during the workdays last year, and we needed something to do with them, so. So that will hopefully be a good activity and kind of kick that off, so that it is strong. And then our PLC goal has already kind of begun, which is that during the teacher work... And then, um, our PLC goal has already kind of begun, which is that, um, during the, the teacher work day sorry, not the teacher setup day, on the building day, they did have times to meet in grade levels, and so, um, I went around and kind of charted out what it is, and so, the approach that we're taking to rejuvenate PLCs is not to say we're doing PLCs and start with the structure, we're actually gonna start with the professional conversation, and then hopefully by having those professional conversations, the structure of the PLC forms around those, and so, um, we're starting and we're having this year um, be focused on, uh, learning losses and learning gaps. We have a, a few things that obviously we want to address, but we also need to look at, um, data collection, so last year, and so for the last eighteen months, um, the, the data that we have is kind of microdata, which is what we know, we're collecting it at, at the classroom level, and in terms of the large data source, there, there wasn't much, and the one, and what we did have, I would say, um, not necessarily lacks, but it has less validity than we'd like, and so for instance, we can look at last year's SAS scores, but we know all the factors that went into that. We can look at last year's aims, but we know all the factors that went into that, in addition, um, we're rolling out the iReady, uh, platform. And so, we'll have that, and so from there, we know that even to recognize learning losses and learning gaps, it's gonna take a little time to get to know them, and unfortunately, to start, what we're gonna have to do is look at it more as this cohort versus what we'll have to define as kind of a typical cohort, so we won't be able to say, these kids versus these kids, we're gonna say alright, this year's third grade class versus what we're used to have in the third grade class, and address them that way. But again, the focus really is also on building up that PLC structure, which is norm-based, which is database, which is um, goal-based, but I at least am gonna theorize that I think it'd be more successful to start with the topic and build a structure around that, rather than focus on the structure, and then try, try to come up with a topic, uh, to go there, so, those are kind of the updates on the goals. And the last thing I want to mention, and if you've driven by GMS, you may have seen the sign outside and thought the heck is that all about? And, um, so right now, if you drive by GMS, it says, welcome back, now what?
Oh yeah, I don't promise.
So, um, it's going out in the blog too, but now what is the GMS theme for this year, so last year we had Be Curious. And so, as last year ended and the summer went through, the question that kind of kept going through everyone's head was, well, now what? And so, as I thought about it and I realized it, is that now what is actually the perfect second theme to the first theme of Be Curious, because you start off by being curious, and you look at something, and then to get into exploration and discovery and those next levels, what you have to keep asking yourself is, okay, now what? And so, now what is our theme this year, to take us beyond curiosity and into discovery. And so, that's why the sign right now says, now what? Did I do it on purpose before I explained it? Yeah, why? Because I wanted to kind of pique people's interest. So, hopefully did that, and hopefully my explanation will come out in the blog, and as we continue to push it out, uh, we'll, we'll say satisfies people's curiosity. So that's all I have for you, and I'm, welcome your questions.
I did have, I did wonder what now what means, I thought maybe you were like, just throwing up your hands.
Like, do we not know what we're doing? Being made known, because people are like, we're clueless, that sounds like we have no idea what's going on.
We are curious.
Yes.
Now what? I love it, it's, it's good work.
Did you save a Jersey barrier for that theme?
No, I didn't, although they did come back to that, I said, uh, should we have done one of now what, I'm like, no, the Be Curious one is fine. Because I don't want the themes still to be in isolation, and I'm hoping that they build on each other, so I can see now what is built upon Be Curious.
I, can I just have, I have a comment about the recognitions that we do in the school of a mother whose children have never received any recognition? That it seems to be the same kids over and over getting the rest of reg- recognition, and if there was any way you could, I mean, keep a spreadsheet that the same kid doesn't get it twice in one year at least. I, I, we, we do a golden horseshoe or something, and we keep track, and they have to be good kids, we're not just, oh, honey's child never got one. But if there's a way that the team can keep track of
Yep.
the same teacher doesn't nominate the same kid at the same, does that make sense?
For different awards, is that what you're saying?
Just for recognition, I'm not saying my kids weren't bad kids, they weren't exceptional, but some kids that got awards weren't that either, but it just
Yeah.
I don't want every kid a trophy kind of thing, but just keep track of it, that, just a little bit.
Yeah, yep.
I think there are a lot of different
Well, I think at GMS, they, they, probably if there's any school, it's GMS that does that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
More so, and I, I think it's when you get to the higher grades, it's
Yeah.
And I think, I think GMS does a really good job of recognizing kids for all sorts of different things.
Exactly.
You know?
Well, we do birthdays, and I'll tell you yesterday, because of the, the bus three fiasco, and I, I was still out waiting for the, for, for the buses to arrive, and I just kind of called in and said, Joyce, we need to start the day, can someone just say the pledge? Well, I heard from the two students who did not get their birthday recognized, I made sure today that they were recognized.
Yeah, they noticed, they noticed.
And they appreciate it, so we love that.
Yeah.
Dan, while you've got the public's attention, can you just, are, are they in-person virtual, what are we doing for open houses this year?
Okay, so, so, um, September twenty-second and twenty-third are our two open houses, they're not gonna be virtual, they are gonna be in-person. Um, it was just brought up at the staff meeting, and so, right now, um, what we have not yet decided is if it's going to be a parent information night style open house, or it's just parents come and listen to the future, or it's going to be a student-led kind of open house, come, here's my desk, here's my chair, so well, I'm working with the leadership team and the rest of the staff, um, we're gonna get that decided shortly, so that it'll be communicated out. Um, one thing also that the public should know is that while pre-K to one goes on the first night and two through four go on the second night, the UAs, um, divide up. So, some of them will be on the first night, some of them on the second night, if a parent, um, has a question, concern, or need to address one of the UAs, and they happen to be attending on their off night, they're welcome to come to speak to that, um, UA who's there, so for instance, if Melissa Grisonne happens to be on the pre-K to one night, but a third-grade parent has something specific for Melissa, they're welcome to come that night just to speak to Melissa, but know that, you know, the third-grade teacher will not be there and their room won't be available.
Traditionally, do kids usually go?
They've gone back and forth.
Yeah.
And that's, uh, uh, last year we didn't have a typical, we had a, a Google Meet, and so, in surveying the staff and hearing it, and historically, they've kind of gone back and forth, so the question that I kept getting was, which way are we gonna do it, and so
Do you want twenty kids and twenty parents, do you want fifteen kids and fifteen, yeah, it's up to them.
Yeah, so the, 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 the two things that are to be decided but will be communicated are the format of it, and then, once we decide on the format, what the schedule will look like, whether we will, um, leave it as an open hour, well, whether it will be two blocks assigned alphabetically, or it'll just be two blocks, so those are just kind of the, the wrinkles we just need to iron out in the next couple of days, to communicate it up.
But I believe at all three schools, we're back to in-person, live, open house.
Yes.
So that, you know, and again, we'll have expectations on masking, et cetera, when we get to that, but for right now, that's
Yeah, we, I would say, we coordinated to make sure that we were all on page on that, and also to make sure that the dates were, because I believe I think CHS, CHS may go as early as next week.
Their LMS is next week.
LMS, CHS.
CHS is the sixteenth.
Yeah, it's almost like, you know, the next three Wednesdays you're gonna have.
Anything else for Dan? Alright, thank you so much. So we're on to old business, we have, um, policies for reapproval. Do you wanna?
Yep, so, um, under this section, so the reapprovals are ones that we have reviewed and did not find any needs to, excuse me, need to change. And so we're just seeking, uh, board reapproval of these, so these are all in, well, it's actually split between section G and section H. Um, but those are all recommended as, to reapprove as written, happy to take questions or comments if there are any though.
I have a question on two of them. For GCF, I mean, really, it's just a curiosity, what kind of gifts are they giving out at conferences these days?
What?
Technology?
Well, so, I'll, I'll, I'll give you an example of that, and, and really, hang on, because it's slowly loading for me.
Which one?
Which policy?
GCF is the professional. GCF is what I wrote down.
GCF is professional staff hiring, which is relatively short, you know, it just says
No, this has to do with conferences, what?
Uh, that's
They give out goodie bags at the special.
Oh, it must be GCI.
I'll give you, I'll give you an example, well, do you want to do these, and then we can talk about that one, because that, that one we are bringing forward with a first read, so
And then GCI was in one, so we could do these first, yeah, yeah.
Got it. Alright, so, did you have any questions on the first batch?
No.
No? Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve policy GCF, GCG, GCR, HP, and HPA. For reapproval.
A second?
Alright, any further discussion? All in favor?
Say aye.
Um, opposed, abstain, those all pass, reapproval five zero zero.
Alright, so the other section are the policies that we're bringing forward for a first read, so these did have some changes that we needed to make to them. So, one is on FMLA leave, um, and just making sure that we're fresh and current with the law as that has changed, and then the other is GCI on professional staff development opportunities, and Tara, to, to speak to GCI, um, the, wh- what's happened over time is that various agencies have started to offer training, um, so they knew, for example, the staff members had access to three hundred dollars of professional development money. So they would say, okay, we're gonna run a workshop for three hundred dollars, and you get a free tablet. And the workshop is actually training on the tablet, so for three hundred dollars, you get, you get a free tablet as you take this. Well, the question became, taxpayers have paid the three hundred dollars.
Right.
Whose tablet is it? Um, and the stance we've taken is that is a school district tablet, it's not a personal tablet. So, that's why we just wanted to make sure that that was clear in here, because, um, that had become a bone of contention, and actually, there are seven hundred and fifty-dollar workshops with a free iPad, well, they're really you're paying for the iPad through that, and so, we wanted to just clarify, and that's why it's worded the way it is, Michelle, I think I captured all that.
Yeah.
Correct, but that's the, that's the situation that we're addressing.
Why is when I call up GCI, GCR opens?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Yes.
When I click on GCI, it comes up GCR.
Or, yeah.
Oh yeah, it does say GCR at the top.
Ah, hello, that's fine.
Hang on, I got spinning, spinning pinwheel.
You're on the First reading.
It should fix on both, once I fix it.
Yeah, see how the top that says GCR?
Yep.
So is it, so what's the name of this policy?
Give me a minute.
Okay.
In two sections.
I, I, I actually think, Michelle, well, let me see what you have, I think it's a typo on the doc, because GCR is non school employment, not, so the
GCR is up above.
Let me go to GCR and just see what that opens.
GCR.
I'm sorry, my computer's not nice to me right now.
That's okay, so I think what happened is the
Is it a typo?
The PDF of the policy says, has GCR at the top, and it should say GCI.
Oh, okay, okay.
We had another
It, it's literally right here, Michelle, if you look, it says policy code GCR, and that is non-school employment.
Right.
And then if you look at GCI, which is titled GCI, it says GCR, so that's just a typo, that this is GCI.
I got it.
Yep.
Okay, I will, I will take care of that on the policy right now.
What was your question, Tara?
Was it the third, fourth, and fifth paragraphs? For the second to fifth, it just talks about, uh, if the employee is leaving after having the item on loan for one year, the item remains in the custody and possession of the district, I feel like that should say if they've had the item on loan for up to one year, the item will remain within the custody of the district, okay, so, if it's a new item, it stays with the district. And then, what happens between the one and two years, because the next paragraph says if it's on loan for two years, the employee may purchase the equipment, so really it should be if the item is on loan for two or more years, do you know what I mean?
Oh, the purchase price is different, so after two years, they, they pay seventy-five percent, after three years, they pay fifty percent, and after four years, we just give it to them.
That's the way I thought it was.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so, Tara, ask me
But it's like, okay, so if they've had it for a year and a half, they've only really had it for one year.
Right, that's how I read it.
So are you looking to maybe make it say between one and two years? Year, two years is purchased with district funds, employees can buy, what about one to two years? So maybe the first one is just for up to a year, and then on loan for two at least two years, for at least three years, for at least four years.
That seems redundant, like a lot more words, but it's more specific.
I think it's that level, because, you know, I think when we wrote it, we were thinking typically people leave You do have people who exit mid-year, and so, to, to Tara's point, I think that
To be more specific, yeah.
We would know to tell them to return whatever they have, but, yeah.
We're pretty good at prorating accordingly, but we could actually put that wording in here.
Well, the other thing too, is you could just say by the end of that school year, instead of one calendar year, make it, because people could take a training in May. You know, and use it till the following May, but they don't get to use it for June, so
It does actually say, the employee is leaving after having the item on loan for one year.
Right.
So it does say after one year.
But is it on loan from December when I took the workshop to the next December, or is it the school year?
Right.
When I'm actually using it?
Right. So if it's less than one year, oh yeah, leaving after having, so they have to have it at least for a year. Well, anything a year or less, it stays with the district.
Well, I don't think this part, this part is talking about stuff that they get at a workshop.
Yes, it is.
Computer, this is talking about school equipment on loan.
No, this is under the paragraph about
Yes, under professional
Yeah, on the previous pages, definitely, it, it's referencing
Employees?
No. Referencing seminar, conference, workshop, gifts, or provision of technology equipment.
I don't know, if it's clear to you, fine, if it's
No, I, I, I just want calendar year or a school year. So maybe it's up to one school year.
Yeah.
Up to two school years, up to three school years, or after three school years.
Yeah, we can, I think the up to tells what that gap is, right, so
Yeah.
It closes that gap, I guess.
Okay.
And you know what, it's gonna void us, I don't want to end up, you know, calculating eighty-eight point five percent. So, I think the up to will help us.
Yep.
And you want to make that school year, correct?
Up to one school year, yep.
I would, yeah.
Same with the three years.
Yes, and, and the same with four.
Oh, and this four, yeah, right.
So I think we put the up to and school year in each one of those paragraphs, that, that's a good catch.
The, did we want to keep in the NHSBA note from April two, two thousand fifteen? Under appeals, that almost just seemed like it was a
Oh yeah, that should be deleted, Michelle, at the very, in the last paragraph where it starts NHSBA note.
Oh.
We typically delete that, that got left in.
Okay.
Yes, yes, yes.
So we'll strike that whole piece.
Okay.
Good.
Good catch, Tara.
Can I ask a question on the other one, are, are we done with this? Also, you can go on GCCBC, I don't see any yellow on it, or
It's all
The whole thing is brand new?
New, because when I went through the old one with the new, the revised policy from the NHSBA, I noticed a lot of things that would have had to have been changed. And I said, might as well just rewrite the whole policy.
Okay. So the whole, okay. I was confused because it said approval February twenty-second, two thousand and six. So I assumed this was the.
Original on there.
Okay. All right, so this is all new. Can I have the old language?
Original.
Yeah, so the, the original is what's posted on the website now.
Website.
We can, we can get that to you.
I can look on it, as long as it's available.
Attached to that policy, if you scroll.
No.
Okay.
I just like to look at what's there and what the changes are.
I know why that happens.
And in the past, I can't remember the wording, but when it's a complete rewrite,
Yeah.
we sort of say, so you still hold on to old policy, original, and then complete rewrite on this date.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve policy GCCCBC and GCI for first reading as amended.
A second.
I was going to do it.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain, five zero zero. And coronavirus review and update.
So current situation, we are up and running. We do have a couple of active cases in the schools. We are meeting tomorrow. Remember, we shifted from a daily COVID update to a weekly COVID update. We're going to be meeting Thursday mornings. So tomorrow morning is our first update to see exactly where we are. But I can tell you that we've got students who are, have tested positive and are not in the schools at this point. And we also have family members who are quarantining under the new rules that have been set out. And we, you know, I, I've been involved in phone conversations and emails with a parent. Just clarifying, you know, what exactly are the rules going forward? So DHHS has shifted quarantining to a household contact. So we're not going to be quarantining anywhere near the number of students in the schools. But even clarifying those rules has been, just making sure that we're all on the same page and understand what those rules are. So you may or may not have heard from a parent who was sorting through it. The good news is that we're, we're all in agreement on a ten-day quarantine. The question was on, is there a longer quarantine that was necessary? And we were able to flush that out with DHS today. So, so now we have an answer to it. So I think we, I think we're where we need to be. But it's, it's a whole new set of rules and just making sure that we follow those will be important. The other thing is the reopening guidance. So the board approved version three point O. We then added the FAQs, because we all knew there were questions. And I just think it's important the public know that, yes, that got added. It wasn't technically voted on as part of the plan, but the board had raised those and the board had a hand in helping to author what those responses were going to be and what are the questions were going to pop up. So I called what we put out to the public when I finally sent it. I called it version three point five, because it had that additional information in it. And I wanted to, you know, if somebody looks at the way these things sort of progress chronologically, I mean, technically, the board approved three point O. Three five just had more detail and explanation. And it didn't really deviate from what the board approved. But I guess technically, you never voted on three point five. It was really a clarifying thing. If I, if I went to four point O, that's where we would be doing something completely different. Like, okay, the masking thing, you know, we think we got that wrong and we're going to adjust it the following way. And that, that requires a rewrite. But I, I felt like three five was just clarifying and not redoing, so.
So we could reapprove it as version three point five and then we're all set, right?
You, you certainly could. You could have another, another vote on that. It's substantially the same, but it, it would certainly just solidify that we, we did do additional.
I'll make a motion to approve reopening plan version three point five.
I just need one more minute. I didn't actually. I mean, I saw it when it was in its working draft.
Yep, and just to, to make it clear, I added the link to the daily health screening, which hadn't changed. So I just added the link in. That's what we expect our families to be checking for, and that's actually been the same since, I think it had a July update on it, but it was pretty darn similar to what had been in place prior to that.
Anything in here about the, the, whatever quarantine protocols we are doing or contact tracing?
So if you go to the link under, on, on the second page where it says key mitigation strategies, and you click on the New Hampshire Department of Health, Public Health, that will bring you to the toolkit.
Okay, with the flow chart.
With the flow chart, with the screening algorithm. And that's where all that information is. And, you know, that's a hyper-linked document with further clarifying points. And so that's what we were working through with one family, just to say, well, this is the way it's written. And so, yes, but that's where all that information is.
Great.
All right, I'm good on the questions. Will the, will the district be putting out? I know towards the end of last year, from January four, there was a running spreadsheet for daily cases that, per school, and then a district that people could click on, that was on the district website. Will that be done on a weekly basis? Or is that data being tracked so people can?
I, I will let you know after we meet tomorrow, because we, we had conversation about adjusting that, maybe simplifying it a little bit. For example, the staff reporting piece, which, you know, given, given that most of, well, all of our staff have access to a vaccine. So we're anticipating way less COVID impact from a staffing angle. Doesn't mean that's going to bear out, but we want to get that as simplified as we can. So after we meet and review it all tomorrow, my intent is to have it available on the website, because we want to be transparent about it. But I just can't say exactly what it's going to look like yet.
Yeah, I think that's helpful information for parents and then they can make their informed decisions based off of that. They may decide if they have a high school student and they see that there's three cases at Campbell that were active at some point, that they may ask their kiddo to, to mask up during that time. And versus the district saying you should mask up. So I, I'm all about as much as we can being as transparent with the data as possible. If it needs to be weekly though, because again, you guys are meeting more on a weekly basis, that would be something I think that could work if it goes out with a link on the Friday emails or something.
This is why we decided to meet on Thursday. So we have our, we meet every other Thursday as an admin team. So we're tacking it onto the end of that meeting. And then on the opposite Thursday, we're having the Zoom or the Google Meet.
Yeah.
Meeting. And then it can go fresh in the, in the newsletter on Friday. So it seemed like Thursday was the best time to make sure we hit it.
I think parents will appreciate the information in whatever form it can come out in.
Yeah, it can be simplified.
Yeah. All right. Did we have a second on the motion to reapprove? We did.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye, although I liked your fact section, I thought that was great.
All right, four one zero.
Thank you.
You'll come over to the side before you know it, Liz.
What?
You'll come over to the side before you know it.
Fourteen kids hospitalized in the whole state. You're not going to change my mind.
It's fourteen too many.
They would also be hospitalized for the flu with RSA.
Not necessarily. Public input?
I'm just here to observe at this time.
Okay. Oh, welcome.
Welcome.
Where'd you come from?
Most directly, sir.
Well, welcome to Litchfield.
Did anyone say anything to you about the office?
Oh, the show.
Yeah.
It's a whole novel joke, he's never heard that. Do you have kids in the district?
Yes, one in fourth grade.
Great, Bruce, great. It's a good scene. All right, then, that, any questions on the manifest?
Let me just, do you want me to check in?
Yeah, do check in.
See if we have anybody here.
Does anybody have any questions for the manifest? Did anybody sign before you?
Nope.
Oh, so I guess.
You got two signatures on it.
There you are.
Again.
And with that, we will adjourn the meeting. After I just sent out a reminder that our next meeting is scheduled for, actually, we have a board retreat next week on the fifth. Our next.
Eight.
Eight, sorry. I was looking at the number. Our next meeting is September fifteenth, here at Town Hall at five PM. And in the meantime, if anyone has any input or questions for the board, they can be directed, sent to us via email at schoolboard@lichfieldsb.org. Thank you for watching.